Meeting for Tuesday, December 1st, 2020 at 7:02 PM. Clerk, would you please bring up the flag for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so with that, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Brutnicki.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington. Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lengel.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Under consent agenda, please add claims for November 25th, 2020 through December 2nd, 2020, in the amount of $1 million, $18,507.33. And under new business, add Agenda Bill 20-128, Doherty-Farmstead lease with Jenna Jennings for pasture rental. And if it's okay with council, I'm going to put this at the beginning. I don't have paper copies tonight, so I'll be working off of screens, and I don't want to forget this. So with that, are there any council members that want to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Mike Remington, still moved?
Second, Michelle.
So we have a move by Mayor Portem Remington, a second by Councilmember Hoag to approve this evening's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Second, McHenry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And so move on to public comment. We did have one written comment. Believe Jody sent a little bit earlier. I'm trying to pull it up tonight. I'm not seeing it, Jody.
I can summarize it for the record if you'd like, mayor.
That would be just fine.
This is an email that was received from Duval Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. It was forwarded to council for review, and I will now summarize. This was an email. Wow. Okay, somebody needs to mute themselves. Okay. Sorry, I'm going to pause so I can mute everybody really quick, because we're getting feedback. My apologies. Okay, so this was regarding two questions. The first was related to COVID-19 funding that Inslee announced on November 20th that there would be additional financial support support funds for families and businesses impacted. And the email is asking that anything that the mayor and council could do to try and procure some more of the care's money from the state would be ignored if needed. The second item is related to WAVE and the many complaints regarding slow connections and frequent downtimes. Asking questions related to the link on the city's Facebook page for people to connection. What is the outcome of this? Do they have a plan to fix these issues? Is WAVE providing any feedback regarding the concerns of Duval businesses and residents? Worth working from home, at-home schooling, and businesses switching to more online shopping and ordering now would be the time to get these issues addressed and resolved with WAVE. So that is a summary of the comments that were sent to council this afternoon. That is the only public comment I repeat.
Thank you. And I'll address the answers to those questions in the mayor's report as best I can with the information that I have. And then we had an attendee that apparently wanted to speak. So if anybody that's on the line, feel free to unmute yourself and provide your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. This is Greg Napland, President, Snow Valley North Little League, address 28320, Northeast 147th Court, Duval. Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate mayor, council, and staff. Again, I've gotten Greg Napland, President, Snow Valley North Little League. I know many of you have family, friends, neighbors who take active roles in our league. As you know, we're an important asset to the community. First, I want to say thank you for your consideration of the proposed fee schedule with relation to the upcoming COVID relief in 2021, and then your ongoing review of the fee schedule moving forward. Since taking over as the role of president in 2018, I've been facing a lot of big issues. And the top of that list actually is our increased field costs that we've been facing. Prior to the Big Rock expansion, our field costs were around 5% to 10% of our overall cost. Since that expansion and our donation of $50,000 towards the expansion of the park, we have seen those field costs exceed to 50% of our overall costs. This specific issue, as well as the impacts of COVID-19, have us greatly concerned for our long-term solvency as a league. In addition, we have concerns over the safety and playability of Field One at Big Rock. Its current condition has improved due to joint efforts between us, but it's still not a good comparable for other grass fields. We've seen twisted ankles, cancellation of games due to safety concerns from competitive teams because of the quality of the turf, and then also the location of the sun at home plate takes away from prime playing hours due to its being in the catcher's face, batter's face, and other issues related to that. We can't continue to operate as a community-based league even with the proposed rates sadly. As much as we love Big Rock Park, and it is a great park, it's embraced by our community and even our competitors that come play us, they comment how much they love it. We have great concerns over those proposed rates and how we are going to survive as a league moving forward. We submitted our comparative analysis, comparative analysis of other cities and communities, which we felt like were a better comparison than the ones we saw in your proposal for both turf and grass fields at Big Rock being discussed tonight. Our analysis also showed that in comparable community, our rates are higher. I understand your financial concerns with synthetic turf, but I wanted to reiterate that we want to be partners with you in the care of that field. Lastly, this is a great and first positive first step, and I really appreciate everyone's hard work through this pursuit. But I ask each of you in this meeting to consider recommending another full comparative analysis of both the dirt and synthetic fields to see if there's something else to be done to help relieve the community-based league that would like us, to help community-based leagues like us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on with our agenda. Just a second. All right, hold on just a moment, sorry. My screen scrolled way too far, and so now I'm getting back to the first page again. All right, so under scheduled items, mayor's report. First off, to address the chamber's concern, we know that there's money coming from the state at this point. We do not know how and if cities will be involved in the distribution. I did email chamber just within the last week, asking folks if they wanted to have another meeting to discuss the ongoing concerns of the businesses as related to COVID and especially not getting, not having new federal funding come through. As soon as I have that information from the governor's office, it'll be emailed out to the chamber admins as is standard practice. Regarding WAVE, just would like to remind folks that the city has no legal authority over WAVE. We're doing everything that we can to communicate with WAVE and get them to to improve their service, which they have. There are many people that have received better service in recent times. There's still a big problem on Main Street. I'm not convinced at this time that they are committed to fixing that. That said, I am participating on a broadband work group with the Association of Washington Cities. There's legislation coming forward to expand the authority of ports to provide internet service to local communities. And we don't know where that's going to go. Good news coming from Washington DC is that the Chair of the FCC is resigning, which is standard with a change in administration. So there is hope that we will see some change in the direction of the FCC that might lead us towards some level of local control. As we talk to other cities throughout the state and counties as well, the unreliability of internet across the state, including in large cities, is a huge concern that we're all trying to get the authority to actually make a difference on. Unfortunately, the federal government decided that for us. I think most of us would would prefer that broadband be considered a utility like phone and electricity. So that means not only do you have to have access to it, it has to work well. Right now, we don't have any of those controls. And so we'll continue to do what we can on that front. It is a part of our draft legislative agenda and continues to be something that we talk about with our representatives, both in Washington State and in Washington DC. It's not a fun issue for anyone, but I do have to say, from personal experience during COVID, we changed from a regular router in our home to a mesh network, and I've not had, I've had one drop at my house on Zoom when all four of us in the household are on Zoom since. So I do know that there are some places where changes with your equipment in your homes can make a difference, and so I'd like to encourage folks to also look at those options as well, because it's definitely made all the difference in the world for my household. Other items on the mayor's report. We had our North End Mayor's meeting today. Everyone is being creative on figuring out how to do holiday celebrations. Just like we have, we've got the holiday light-up Duval edition coming this Friday. So Santa and Mrs. Claus will light the tree, and then there will be a parade through town through neighborhoods on a specific route. And that will also include a food drive for folks, and we're having a contest on best decorated house. So it would encourage folks to send pictures and addresses of homes that we can go out and judge, and we'll be giving out some prizes for that, which will be different and a fun way to celebrate this year. In relation to what's going on with COVID, we had our mayor's meeting with the Director of Public Health today, and the outlook is not good. If we don't get additional funding from the federal government, at this point, King County Public Health is very concerned about not having funding to even have testing sites by February. There's also concern about the state is so overwhelmed with new cases at this point that they have stopped reporting the negative test results and only have the capacity to to release the positive results. We did see a slight dip in the last week, but we're warned that that's artificial because test results lag from day to day. And so the rolling seven-day average continues to rise. And in fact, within the last two weeks, it looks like Duval is on the upswing again with now a total of 75 cases, and we're averaging, we're now at a really high number per 100,900, over 930. And you want to be much, much lower than that. The good news is, is that the federal government is going to make decisions on who gets vaccines first, and those decisions are likely coming this week. So we should have a better idea of when the everyday person can get access to the vaccine. But it's, you know, it is up in the air at this point as to what happens with that. We are very concerned about potential additional restrictions coming out in the next couple of weeks if the numbers don't turn around. We do know that the governor will be coming out with new safe start phases and information based on the data that's been collected recently, and we expect that in the next week or two. And I'm hoping that the numbers calm down enough that we can have a much more normal holiday season for folks. The other bit of news that came out just late this afternoon and not having the opportunity to talk to King Kenny Public Health, I'm not sure that our local health officials will have this recommendation, but they are now saying, if you've been exposed to quarantine for seven to 10 days instead of 14. So if that turns out to be a scientifically accurate quarantine level, that'll provide some relief to a lot of folks throughout our communities without having to isolate for so long. Other than that, we'll be discussing the draft legislative agenda tonight. And for, as a reminder for folks, the Sound Cities Association Annual Meeting is tomorrow night. So it's all virtual. Everyone's welcome to attend. And I think that is the bulk of what I have to report this evening. Any questions? Seeing none, and then without any council reports, do we have any council committee reports this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to administration update.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'll bring up and share my screen really quick. It's a pretty quick update, and I actually have a couple of new updates just since doing this as well. Can you see my screen yet for the admin update? It doesn't look like it. Sorry, give me just one more second. Can you see it now, hopefully? Okay, thank you. So I'll be really quick. We're still waiting for our position background checks to come in. It's just taking a little bit longer. You know, we have, with COVID, it just takes longer to get anything done, it seems right now. The Finance Department has begun their re-recruitment process for their position. It's the third time in the biennium, so hopefully this will be, this will be the one. King County Growth Target Meeting with King County staff, I just hot off the press. They're coming to our 1215 meeting under presentation, so I'm really excited that they were able to make time for us. They offered, and us, along with, you know, 40-plus other cities are asking for that. So I feel like we got in pretty early, so I'm excited about that. The Duval Foundation for the Arts will be coming to give their, essentially their yearly presentation at the 1215 meeting as well. And then, for those of you that didn't know yet, we did close the RFP yesterday for our ERP, which is essentially our finance and planning software. And we had five that responded, so we were pretty excited about that. You know, we weren't quite sure how many we'd get, so I just wanted to provide that update. And we'll give you another update at the next meeting on the steps moving forward. But that's all I have for the admin update. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Remington? Laura, I just thought maybe this would be a good time to, if you could update the file we have on applicants for city council position and maybe remind council members, and I think we have three in the file currently. And also can go online and start reviewing it. So maybe that was more a message from me than you.
I was just going to say, because I honestly am not in the know. Today was my first day back from a short vacation, but I do know that we have some. They're in that file, we talked about it at our admin meeting. So yes, Jody, maybe just resend the link if we need to, to council.
It's the same link you would follow to get to your council packets. I created a special folder for vacancy applications. So we've not received any since those three as of this point. Our deadline, I think I set it for the 14th, so we have another week and a half or so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Napland?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if we could, I think it's great that we have three, but is there any way we could bump that as a reminder in case the deadline is coming back?
Yep. Absolutely.
I did, we had three already. I just miss out if someone else is planning and they don't realize.
Great. Any other questions for admin? Okay, so moving on, we have a presentation on, it doesn't seem right, growth targets.
Good evening, mayor and council. We do have, well, I can't say it's a super short presentation, but it's as short as I could make it, trying to put 20 years into a couple of slides. But we will be talking, this is going to be on our agenda really for the next several weeks, if not going into February. But let me go ahead and share my screen again. Uh-oh. Oh, there we go. Okay, sorry, I thought I lost it. Sorry about that. It's hard to do it when you have just one screen and to make sure that everything's going correctly. So I did place a lot of documents in your council packet, so thank you for bearing with the amount of information. But I also sent hyperlinks as well to some documents I wanted to just have, I'll call it a refresher course on. So about every decade or more, we go through a growth target and capacity analysis with King County and all the cities within that county. It seems that every time Puget Sound Regional Council does an update like they did in 2040, we relook at our growth targets, and that would be for both residential units and for jobs. And they just completed the 2050 plan, and that was just recently adopted, and that was about a two-year process. I saw many of you actually in that process, through the adoption process, and especially through the surveying and the community meetings. So for those that are on the line, our other members of our community, and for council members that haven't been through this process, because I'm not sure that anybody on our council, and I know for sure on our planning commission, have not been through a growth target process. I was somewhat involved the last go-around, but it was really to just maintain the existing growth targets. And the last time growth targets were really done was in 2006. And that was a, you know, a very different process than what it is today. That was, that process back in 2005 and '06 was really, quite honestly, planning directors going around to a table, going around a table and deciding what allocation of population would go to cities. It is a very, like I said, it's a much more robust process this time. I'm only part of a much larger group that's going to go through this process. So growth targets, essentially, they're really just a policy statement of housing and jobs that we need to account for in our next comp plan update, which is our 2024 comprehensive plan, which we'll start working on in this biennium. It's also part of the county-wide planning policies. It's for the urban areas only, and it's supposed to be for a planning period of at least 20 years. And it's created collaboratively by all cities in King County. And that was really important in the message that they really sent home to us in our King County Planning Directors meeting, and then again in our regional caucuses. Even though they've provided us information and data, they do want to make sure that we have a collaborative process for what those numbers look like. So this is really just who sets the growth targets, and it's a pretty complex process. And so as you can see, it's, the Growth Management Planning Council is the one that adopts the county-wide planning policy. And it's within that document that shows the growth targets for the county and then shows a list of what the targets are for the cities. There's an inter-jurisdictional team, and they're recommending to the Growth Management Council. And then there's, there's an IGT subcommittee of that IGT inter-jurisdictional team that looks at development patterns and growth targets. And they recommend essentially an overall process, and then they review and recommend technical and policy decisions. There is an urban capacity and growth targets technical committee as well, and they review and recommend the technical assumptions. And then there's me, who's in the King County Planning Directors, and we provide feedback on process and targets, and we get to review the process. But for the most part, it's pretty much sewed in by the time it comes to us. And then we have regional geography caucuses, and those, that is an area where we're supposed to come up with mutual agreement on city targets. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in one of my slides, because we're one of 19, what they call cities and towns. And so we have the largest group that has to try and come to a mutual agreement on city targets. So where do the numbers come from? This is a really important question. They come from the regional growth strategy and the regional forecast. And the regional growth strategy is in the 2050 vision. So that's where that input starts at. Then there's the county-wide input, so that is the current estimates, the urban growth capacity data and facilitation. And there's local inputs. We're a local input, and so we talk about infrastructure, timing, and direction. So growth targets, how do, how do they really work from start to finish? So that regional forecast is for all of the Puget Sound regional counties, and we're just one of a handful. And so you can see the map down to the left under the regional forecast shows the counties that are involved in PSRC. And then each county has a growth projection that we're supposed to take, and we'll have, we have a slide on that as well. How much is King County supposed to take? And they're actually supposed to take 50% of the regional growth amongst all the counties within the PSRC group. We then look at regional geography allocations, and so that's the different types of cities that we look at. And then we look at specifically each city, their potential planning annexation areas, and then we look at growth target ranges. So we're not really, I don't want to say it's like a, you know, a low, medium, high. They're just pretty much looking at it as, here's, here's what your target is. This is what we'd like you to, to consider as a city. And then these numbers then go into our, you know, into a city growth target that then goes into our comp plan. And then that's what we use for updating our housing and land use elements and our, our other. And then obviously, our zoning map would follow that as well. So you can see, we also talk about data sources. So the data sources are the 2050 regional growth strategy. Numbers come from the Office of Financial Management, and then that population turns into housing units. One of the questions that we asked as a caucus was, we're just finishing, well, not we, the federal government is finishing up the census, so how will that be input? There wasn't a real answer, but they're going to try and look at those numbers, because what happens with OFM is every 10 years, that number gets redone consistent with the 10-year census. And then we also look at county and local factors. So growth targets, key assumptions in the process. So this is that regional forecast. So again, we talked a little bit about the data source, so that's the PSRC regional forecast. So the assumption is, over the next at least 20 years, that the region needs to accommodate just over 1.3 million people and about 884,000 jobs. So this was, this is something I just said a couple of minutes ago. So King County's population share is about 50%, and the job share is supposed to be 59%. So I want to talk a little bit, King County provided to us a methodology, and I included that in your packet. So the first four steps essentially are complete. So step one is create a county-wide and regional geography allocation. Step two, select data factors. Step three, collect data factors. And then step four is to convert that raw data into a percentage share to apply to regional geography allocations. So the county has completed those four tasks. The next step, which is in the process and is somewhat in draft, is apply the data factor shares to regional allocations to create preliminary targets. And so the county's starting to push out, they have been pushing out their preliminary targets. And then Larissa and I have had some follow-up meetings with the county to ask about methodology and assumptions. So we did get some pretty good information from them in the last, in the last two weeks. So I'm not going to go into like all of the technical aspects, but they, these are the data sources. So it's the regional geography growth shares and strategy, and the demographic data from OFM and the Census Bureau. And then the assumptions are, apply regional growth share to county-wide growth for that period, and then convert the population to housing units with household assumptions for each regional geography. As we go through the slides, they also do a waiting exercise as well. And so as you can see, we are a city- And so as you can see, we are a cities and towns. So they've asked the 19 cities to absorb or take about 5% of the population growth and about 3% of the job share growth. Urban and incorporated King County's largest potential annexation areas are in high-capacity transit communities. So those are where you get a weighted average of households. Cities in the rural area include affiliated PAA's. Targets are not, are not created for the rural area. Household size, vacancy rate and group quarter assumptions are unique to regional geographies and reflect long-term and recent trends. So those are some of the weighting exercises that the county does as they're preparing the growth targets. So we've talked a little bit about the housing unit and job growth and a little bit about the assumptions. But I think what I would say is what we've asked them to look at as well is not just purely like here's a number, but what are each jurisdictions in this essentially city and towns? What are their unique parameters? Like what do we have that makes us unique? And so that is the information that I shared with the planning directors out of the survey and I provided you the survey results. When I pulled the survey results last, late last week, early last week from the county, only eight cities had even responded to that survey and, and we were one of, one of them. Let's see, I'm not going to go into this one too much, but the city and PA housing unit and job growth again is based on data sources and assumptions. And we're convened as a city regional geography. So we're part of that small, you know, essentially cities and towns category. And we're supposed to again, work collaboratively to determine our growth targets. And we had that first meeting. But I wanted to share this. So again, this gives you a picture of the amount of population. So up on the top, they would like King County, so this is PSRC, would like King County to take that 50%, which is 660,000. And that equates to 296,000 housing units. And if you divide the two numbers, that gives you kind of an average household size. And that was one of the other questions that we asked at the planning directors meeting was, we, I at least felt that they were using a low per household of just like, it was like 2.21. And that's just not what we are, but they don't change it. And for unique circumstances of every city, they just do the average. They made, they made that clear. We were a little unhappy with that answer, but I just wanted to share that with you. And then you can see under cities and towns that that equates, that 5% equates to about 33,000. And that's 14,000 housing units, 12,950 jobs. So on the right-hand side, I basically say they're asking 19 cities to take that. And if you averaged it across all of our 19 cities, that would be about 1,700 households. They're not asking us to do that. I was just showing it for the purpose, if you spread it across amongst all of the communities. So unfortunately they started this, I don't want to say later, I'm not sure what they expected honestly out of the cities during our budget seasons, but they didn't roll anything out to the cities until the end of October. So my first meeting was October 21st. And so October through December, they're hold, they're hosting the regional geography caucuses. They anticipated two to four meetings and they're going to give a brief GMPC update. That's tomorrow on 12 to. And then they, they are hopeful that we'll have a review draft targets completed within all communities. And that each caucus reaches a consensus on draft targets. I don't really see that happening in January. I think if, if we're lucky, it'll happen in February. They are hoping that in February and March that the countywide planning. Sorry, I can hear, I can hear somebody. Oh, sorry, mayor, I didn't know where it was coming from. February, March, the countywide planning policy public review draft is supposed to go through the GMP process. And then in June, the county takes that whole package and goes through to the PSRC and then that gets reviewed at PSRC. And then ultimately in the third and fourth quarter of next year, the council and city ratification, so council really is the council ratification and we're the city ratification. There, I know the county's hard deadlines are June. That's the expectation by PSRC. I, I think it's, it's going to be a little bit challenging, but we'll see. I just wanted to show you a quick regional map. And you can see that we're right up here in Duval and so we're part of that cities and towns. So you can see a lot of the east side cities in King County are considered small communities. I was surprised and I think I've talked to a couple of you that Samamish is, is considered in the small cities and towns. It's so much larger than, than the rest of us.
Ms. Thomas, do you mind if I break in for a second? I, do you want to share with council what cities are already saying? Councils are starting to say that they're not going to take on.
I was going to get there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because that's really important to our conversation. So.
Yeah. Thank you. And so our preliminary target ranges is kind of a technical slide, but we look at capacity, existing housing and jobs, recent growth share, city area, current growth targets, number of centers and number of station areas. And so the last two bullets were what I was talking about, which is a weighted. So obviously those types of communities are going to get significantly more population than the smaller cities. So what have we provided date? Obviously we have our comprehensive plan that talks about what our land use is up through at least 2024 when we adopt our new comp plan. So we have a set of housing targets that we've had essentially since 2006. So they're within that document. And we also now have the Vision 2050, which was recently adopted. And that gives a new perspective on what is believed to be the regional growth for the next 20 plus years. I also provided you, just so that you could get to see it, because we don't have yet. The new version is the King County Buildable Lands Report. I gave you the 2014 one, just so you could see, start to see what that looks like. And that's really a capacity analysis essentially. And then we provided the King County methodology for growth and job targets. And then I provided the planning director survey and results so that, that you can see what, you know, what I weighed in with. That survey was really meant, it was, you know, just for the planning directors to try and just give some quick information so that all the other cities that we work with, that I don't have, you know, a daily or even a monthly relationship with, they could better understand the context of Duval. Because I don't necessarily know enough information about even, you know, northbound per se. So it was an opportunity for us to, you know, kind of talk about each of our community in a brief way. So this is just a little bit of a snapshot. So the King County growth targets that we have again are 2006 to 31. So we're going to update those. They were developed through OFM and PSRC. Population employment forecasts are allocated by geography. So we've already talked about that. 2040 vision was what we're using now and moving forward, we'll use the 2050 vision. The county housing target for Duval for the period was essentially an additional 11, 1,140 units. And then our job target was 840. That's in table H6 of our residential housing unit target and capacity. I can tell you that we're, we are going back right now. Larissa and I are working to kind of check all the numbers to see where are we at since 2006? So how many of those units have we already gone through and issued? And how many are in what we call that pipeline? And that is also supposed to be information that the county is extracting out of the data that they've requested from us as well. Cause I want to make sure that we are clear with the county and that the county is clear with us on what our growth target is. If we've already made, I don't know, just say that we've, we're already a thousand units in, then you know, how much more, you know, do we really need to take on for the regional growth strategy for that next 20-year planning period? So stay tuned for that. Larissa and I'll get that done this month. So there has been, like I said, quite a bit of work. So between spring of 19 and the summer of 2020, King County rolled out their data collection in three phases. Phase one was density achieved between 2012 and 18, because they had done a check just before that. Then phase two was a land capacity analysis and phase three was an initial capacity looking forward. And that work has now been complete. So King County is now updating the King County Urban Growth Capacity Study, also known as the Buildable Lands. We still do not have a copy of that. I am hopeful that we'll get that here in the next week or so. Cause that's a really important document for our team to look at and make sure that we, that we agree with it. So just kind of going backwards a little bit. So our first, my first meeting to have a conversation with the county was late October. That's not that long ago. We had our first regional caucus meeting in early November. And Larissa, our engineer is assisting on the technical side. So she comes to all of the meetings with me remotely off, obviously. Our second regional caucus meeting is next week, so we'll attend that as well. I also have a King County Planning Directors meeting this week where we should get an update now to what the mayor was talking about just before we're, before we're finished. And I want to leave her with the last kind of words as well. Is there is a definitely a concern by many of the small cities that, including Duval, that we might not really be able to take that much more growth than we already have planned for. And so some cities have, you know, started to go through that process and made that decision earlier than, than later without all of the information. And that's fine. At the end of the day, this has to be agreed to by all of council because we have, we have to provide a number that we believe as a community that we're going to be able to take on for the next, the next 20 years. And I certainly do not attest to being the decision maker for the city. That's pretty much what did happen in 2006. Where planning directors really, in my opinion, made that decision and just brought it back to council. It's not how it's going to be done this time. There's a lot more conversation and much more robust conversations. If you asked me, you know, do we have to take what they give us? I would say no. You know, that's for us to decide. That being said, you know, I think we have room for, you know, for a little bit, you know, to, to take on. You know, everybody has to try and take on some sort of share unless there's some sort of extenuating circumstances. And I think some cities do have extenuating circumstances, including Duval, to keep our number as low as possible. I've been keeping the mayor updated really every week. And she has sent the message strongly through me. And then I share that at our meetings that less is more for Duval. So I'll let you take it, mayor.
Thanks, Lori. You did a great job explaining that. I think one of the, you know, council member Napolin, I've actually talked a lot about this in the last few weeks, especially in relation to transportation. But the bottom line is until they get the concurrency issue fixed on state highways and find a mechanism that will actually fund county roads. We're already experiencing the Snohomish County growth to a, to a rate of 75% of our daily traffic doesn't even come from Duval. You continue to add the growth that is going to happen in Snohomish County with growth in our city. And my, one of my fears without changing that transportation planning process and getting some level of impact fees for the county or some mechanism to fund those roads, that we will end up with gridlock. And we already know at this point, as we've talked about in some of our transportation conversations, that we actually have a true public health and safety risk when our traffic gets backed up, because we really are only a couple of ways in and out. And we have had situations in the last few years where off-duty police have had to come into the city and not been able to get to town in a timely manner because there's no way around Woodenville Duval Road or Northeast 124th. And so, you know, I think the message that we need to send consistently is, you know, here's, here's the impact of growth on us as we've experienced today. Here's what's happening in Snohomish County. Here's what's not happening with the roads. That is our biggest issue, I think, overall as a city. And I think that's going to be our strongest argument. Because infrastructure and the ability to get around is always a big part of these conversations when growth numbers get put out. And that honestly is my number one concern. We have annexation areas, you know, it's the long-term, no, we don't want to grow large. But if we get, if we are forced to take on some growth that we don't need, there needs to be some changes on that transportation level. Even the Washington State Department of Transportation chair voted against an amendment in Vision 2050 because it lacked context and the state lacks the ability to be concurrent. More than anything else, we need the housing, but there needs to be the concurrent conversation of how we change our transportation planning and funding to make it whole. You know, and I think that other cities are starting to get on that bandwagon and realizing that that's one of the big issues. And that we have to continue to hammer home that message every chance we get to continue to get more attention to the issue. A lot of people don't see, you know, you will hear people from the Seattle area say, well, you know, you don't just use county roads to get to work. We, you know, we use your roads for recreation and it's very true. And you'll hear people in Snohomish County talk about all the weekenders and highway two. Very, very true. That said, that to me is more of an indication of a need for a broader transportation planning discussion. That has to be part of the housing discussion as well. I think one of my other concerns here is when you look at the numbers of housing and jobs amongst the counties, you still have the majority of the jobs filtering into King County, which defeats in my mind, part of the purpose of the Growth Management Act, which was to get people to be able to live where they, close to where they work. And that hasn't panned out and it's time to make some significant changes. And so I'm, I'm also very concerned about the cities that are putting their feet down now without having the analysis done. Because I'll be honest, some of those cities that are having those discussions don't have nearly the transportation challenges that we have. And so we all have to, the hard part is that we all need to be team players in this. But we need to go towards the common goal. And I think the common goal is we, as a county and as a region, have to accommodate growth. But how do we do that and guarantee that the transportation infrastructure keeps up with it? That's the biggest issue that we have so far. So I mean, I've got, I could probably talk for an hour on it. So that's just an opening salvo for the many discussions we'll have.
Mayor, let me add one more thing and then I see Jennifer's. So one thing I would also say that's missing and has been missing as long as I've been a planner, but is to talk about revenue and revenue sharing when you're a small community. And where is the revenue going to come to sustain?
Yep.
Small cities, especially when we're bedroom communities. Because residential development does cost cities and it's not always equal to the taxes that we bring in. So I think that's something that I think we should send a loud and clear message on. And that was one of the items I was going to hit at my next planning director and my next regional caucus meeting as well, because nobody's talking about it and it never gets, it never happens.
You're, and you're spot on and that's, I knew as we're getting something and that was exactly it is that's part of the conversation we've been having even, you know, 10 years ago is if you're going to, two things, if you're going to do the. two things, if you're going to do the additional growth, then you need to find a way to get transportation concurrency. If you're not going to allow growth as well, then there's going to have to be a way, a mechanism to make cities like ours whole. Because there's the catch twenty-two of reduced residential growth means your business core isn't as vibrant. It's harder to get that bedroom community going. And there's a balance that I think, believe can be made, but it's going to take a lot of political will from all of us to get there. So thank you, Councilmember Napland.
I just wanted to add really quick, I've been working on the legislative priorities for Eastside Transportation. I'll send out the draft after the meeting. But one thing that was interesting is I was trying to negotiate in, you know, bringing up awareness of the needs out here and that GMA is telling us to bring on, you know, more housing. And yet our roads, there's no solution. We can't fix the roads that get our residents to their workplace, to the larger cities where they're spending money, you know? And because we can only fix the roads and collect transportation impact fees for projects inside our city limits. Anyway, so I was bringing that up and I, and so they kind of negotiated and they put something in about, you know, needing to create new local revenue sources for maintenance and things like that, which of course is very important. But that's not the only problem we have is maintaining our roads. And I said something about how, you know, I think we have some capacity issues as we're, you know, being asked to take on all this growth. And, and the comment back was, you know, oh, you don't really want to talk about capacity, because they'll hear sprawl, that you would want to support sprawl by creating more capacity to have people get out here. And I'm thinking, well, then this makes no sense. I mean, you're asking us to build all these houses out here, but you don't want to fund the roads, because that would create sprawl. It, it just, my mind was blown and I, I don't know what to say. So you'll see what, what we came up with and, but I, but I think we have a, we're a subset, a very small subset of all the cities in the region, and we have very specific needs that other people don't quite understand. So I think we have a battle ahead to try to get some attention or funding. Or I, I'd like to have some bigger conversations about this, because it's, it's only getting worse. We see a lot of houses being built right now.
Mayor Portem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned the key issue, transportation, road capacity, commute times. So I won't go over those. It also affects zoning in a town. Many cities have much more robust areas. There are twenty zoning, makes it easier to add capacity. We don't have that here in our town. A lot of our spaces are four, which limits, you know, how much space we can fill in. One of the key issues for me is infrastructure. You know, certainly roads, but we have our own wastewater plant. And it costs an incredible amount of money to open up another part of that plant to take on growth. And many places are connected to metro sewer. So, you know, all that heads out of town. Here, we have to deal with it. And another one is, you know, there's a certain amount of open space parks you like to have in a town. Literally, we'd have to give up some of that or any future possibility if we were trying to fill in that capacity. So I, there are some unique things out here in the rural community. I realize we don't have as big a voice, but I think we need to really highlight the impacts it has. These are the areas that they're trying to preserve out here. And, you know, adding additional urban growth areas can in fact impact the farming and certainly does impact the feel of the rural space. So I, I think those are the key things I, I think we need to be able to highlight, really push on. I'm not trying to eliminate growth, but I certainly think we want to help manage it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Anybody else have any comments for Ms. Thomas? Councilmember Hoag?
So I've, I've been searching, trying to find it, but wasn't there some talk at one point about put different category than these other cities? Because if you look at all the cities that we're compared to, it's like we're, we don't really fit into that category. And wasn't it called like a contiguous?
Contiguous, yes. So we, we provided those comments and most of us as small communities were pretty much ignored that the nomenclature, as you would call it, is, is defined by PSRC and working with the counties, not just King County. So they essentially kind of changed our name, but we're all still in the same group. And I would, I think I alluded this a little bit. I, I would argue that, you know, that we're not necessarily Snoqualmie, North Bend, or even a Sammamish. In fact, I think Sammamish is in a completely different group. You know, and they do have more, they are contiguous, but they have different issues, right? They have huge infrastructure issues. But you can really think, you can really thank King County for that, because King County basically dumped that city off onto them without the infrastructure. Sorry, I said it out loud, but that's pretty much the truth. And then you have, you know, King County and North Bend are right along, you know, a highway corridor, you know, ninety. So they're, they're in a little bit different. They have at least a better chance of having transportation. And, you know, whether it's through bus service or just different, you know, better road improvements versus a Duval incarnation aren't a very different boat, really. I mean, we're probably more similar than, than not when it comes to what categories we should be in. We don't seem to have, and maybe this is something that we're going to have to really work with SCA on, SBGA, is be better prepared when they do, not the two thousand and fifty vision, but whatever the next one is, if it's two thousand and sixty. But it takes a lot of work and it takes the momentum of multiple generations of council and mayors and staff to keep that framework moving along twenty, thirty years down the road.
Thank you. Anyone else? I know this is definitely an issue that's going to keep us very busy moving forward. So put your seatbelts on, it's going to be a bumpy ride, to say the least, unfortunately. But we'll get through it.
Mayor, one last thing I was going to add and what, because we, the next council meeting, the county will come and talk to us. And I need you to ask a lot of questions. So, you know, basically the information I've given you is a good starting place for questions. But I, I, you know, if you want to send early questions to me, you know, feel free. If you want me to help draft up some questions that council can, you know, can ask, I can do that as well. I think the one challenge we're going to have to trying to get this done by, say, March, which I don't think they'll give us that much time. I think if we're lucky, we'll get to February, is how are we going to do community outreach during a pandemic? And that's going to be really challenging. That's one of my, my main concerns right now, moving forward.
Yep. Yep. That's going to be a big one. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to new business. And we'll start off with the added agenda item that was walked on tonight, Agenda Bill Twenty Dash One Twenty A, Doherty Farmstead Lease Agreement with Jenna Jennings for pasture rental.
Good evening, council, mayor, citizens. Steve Lyszewski, Public Works. We never want to add anything on in haste, but as time is of the essence, we, we had the ask. So we've prepped some standard board lease arrangement paperwork. We had a citizen who saw the RFP, you know, a while ago, but she only has one horse. And she thought she would ask if she could rent the, you know, the field that's up between the Doherty Farm that is fenced about an acre, well over an acre between Doherty Farm and Holy Innocents Church. You know, it's not much money, but again, it's, it's something better than nothing. It's using the space and somebody grazing and helping keep it up. So I talked to the mayor and admin and said, well, send it forward. I did reach out Wednesday. I heard from one council member on, on the thought of it, a good idea or not. And the only caveat that person had was they're willing to do insurance. And of course, we have a standard lease, they use insurance, get it like anybody else. And going rate was one twenty-five a month, plus some utilities for a grand total of one seventy-one and a nickel a month. Better than nothing, something for the interim. It's a month a month. She's just interested in getting through the, the winter and getting her horse out of bounds. Very exciting. That's it. Questions, comments? And that, we, we brought it forward too quickly, because with winter coming and going, you know, three touches and process, winter will be over by the time we would get anything on. So that was all.
Right. Councilmember McHenry?
I think this is a great idea and I support it.
Anyone else on council? I guess I should just say, are there any objections?
Just a brief question, Mayor?
Yes.
Steve, anyone who's had horses knows there's some maintaining the property and picking up after them. It's a fair size, one horse, not a huge issue. Is that something that's part of this lease agreement that they'll help keep it?
Yeah, sorry. Great question, Councilmember Remington. Yes, they, they will mend and tend the fencing on site. They will mend and tend any of the other devices. Like there's a lean-to in the area where they could have a, you know, their hay stored. Access is down off the gravel area. So yes, we, we are totally hands-off. It's a month a month. We kick them out, they go bye-bye. Either way, it's all inclusive on them to perform all the work. We're, we're not obligated to do anything other than let them lease the land.
Thank you.
You bet. Good question. Sorry, I didn't finish that.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak to this? So I'm not hearing any objections. This is a first touch. It was a walk-on. That said, we do have a special meeting next week, which is less time than we normally have in between meetings. We could add this on, or you could suspend your rules this evening if you would like to move forward with it.
Mayor Mike Remington, I move that we suspend the meeting or the process of three-touch rule.
Okay.
Second, McHenry.
We have a first and a second by Mayor Portem Remington and Councilmember Henry, McHenry, to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. I'd be happy to entertain a motion on the agenda bill.
Mike Remington, Mayor?
Yes.
I move that council approve renting the property for, for the horse up at the Doherty property.
Second, McHenry.
We have a first by Mayor Portem Remington, a second by Councilmember McHenry. Any further discussion by council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we'll move on to Agenda Bill Twenty Dash One Ten A, Resolution in Support of the Wellness Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk, also a member of the Wellness Committee. Every year, we have to re-up our commitment to the wellness, to be a well-city through Association of Washington Cities. As you've probably heard before, as a well-city, this, the city earns a two percent discount on our health benefits, which equates to approximately eighteen thousand dollars, is what I've been told. We've struggled this year with our programming due to COVID. Ironically, we are, we've been trying to be creative. The most creative thing we came up with recently was we did a internal employee-only fun survey for the holidays to find out if they like cranberries or if they like their pumpkins painted or carved. And, you know, just something, just something random and fun. And it started out, we only had five people that would respond. And then by the end of it, I think we had like nineteen of people respond, which was great. I think it's just, you know, something. So if anybody has any creative virtual ideas for wellness programming, please reach out to us. This resolution is part of kind of one of the checkboxes we must check on our Well City Award Report. We need to show that we have council and administration support for the program. And I'm willing to entertain any questions or a motion.
I'm not seeing any questions. Oh, she, it looks like Chief Hart might have something to add.
Just a question, Jody, have we met the goal for the year to qualify for next year? I know last week we had not.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, I got to tell you that, that app is horrible. It's absolutely horrible. I can't, I can't even get on it.
Yeah, we, I was just going to say, as of last week, we had not, we were one person shy. We are required to have fifty percent employees do our health questionnaire on the new app that they created. And it's kind of confusing, because you have to fill out the health questionnaire and then you have to turn around and redeem your points. So it's a two-step process that seems to be confusing quite a few people. It's kind of frustrating and we're hoping that we can just figure out how to help one more person. And Carrie, if you still haven't been able to figure it out, please give Sherry a call. She will literally walk you through step-by-step how to get it done.
Thank you. So back to the resolution. This is first touch. So we need to go ahead and suspend the rules to move it forward tonight. Is council interested in doing that?
Here, Mike Remington, I move to suspend the rules. Three-touch rule.
Okay.
Second, McHenry.
A motion by Mayor Portem Remington, second by Councilmember McHenry to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And just so you folks know, normally I ask for conversation, but these are pretty no-brainer things. So I'm not expecting any opposition. So if you do want to speak to the, the suspension, just raise your hand and you can. So now with that, we'll entertain a motion on the underlying motion.
Mayor Mike Remington, I move that the city council approve Agenda Bill Twenty Dash One N A, Resolution in Support Wellness Program.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Portem Remington and a second by Councilmember Napland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And we'll move on to Agenda Bill Twenty Dash One Eleven A, Arch Agreement for Ten Minutes Led by Community Development.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council and members of our community. I'm going to bring up my, my presentation again really quick. Let me share it. So again, good evening. We are now on our, essentially our third version of the memorandum of agreement with Arch. As you've probably noticed, I've been sending out emails as we've been getting updates, either from Arch or where our city attorney, Daniel, and myself have done a review. So I've shared pretty much all of that documentation with you. I'm going to be having a phone conversation tomorrow with Lindsay, who is our staff contact for both the memorandum of agreement and for the covenant. And they really are two separate actions. So this evening, you'll see that we have the discussion here for the memorandum of understanding or agreement with Arch. And then there's another one on, just to talk about the affordable housing and getting that wrapped up with that covenant. So we're on our third draft and we've provided some additional comments. And I've actually talked to a couple of council members today about the comments or potentially some additional changes either to the MOA or to the covenant. We also have, like I said, the restrictive sale, sales and resales. And that's an Arch standard covenant. I'm not sure how much we can change it or modify it, but I can certainly ask if there's items or suggestions. One of my council members, I call mine sometimes, was to look at option number one and what that cost would be. And so I sent an attachment. I got some quick information back from Lindsay last week. So option one, obviously at seventy-five dollars per hour, that's their year one base, is approximately twelve thousand dollars for the thirty-two units. And that's to get us through the first sale of unit cost. And then after sales, there's a compliance and monitoring that would be done. And that's an annual compliance check and report to the city. And, you know, kind of process improvement requests. And that would be at seventy-five dollars an hour. But I think what I'd like to do is kind of just get it, like maybe just some brief information from Lindsay that, that gives us like kind of an estimate of what that would look like on a yearly basis. And I'll come back in our next packet and include that. But I'll also send it out as an email separately, so I can get you that information more quickly. Resales is included. Resales is included and a standard administrative fee in the covenant. So I've got to just recheck the covenant and make sure that that's in there, because that's what is said in the memorandum of agreement. And then there's obviously the annual cost escalator, which is essentially, they use the Bellevue, I just call it Cola, but that's essentially what it is. Are there any questions or comments that you want me to get addressed before we bring back the memorandum of agreement at the next meeting?
Councilmember Napland?
I think I'm still just a tiny bit confused about which fees the city will pay for and which fees are paid for when they resell the unit. Just, I'm just trying to understand the flow of who pays what when. And what exactly we would be agreeing to, that we would be responsible for paying for.
Yes. So option one, that's to get us through the first sales of the 32 units. So that's the 12,000. So that would be our responsibility as a city to pay those costs. And that was a back-of-the-napkin, essentially, estimate from Lindsay. But if you see in the MOA, we can actually put in a not-to-exceed number. So I highlighted that in the MOA, but my guess is that it would be around that amount. And then we would have a yearly cost for them to do the compliance monitoring. And I think that's probably what you also want to know is about what that would look like. So I will get some information back on that. And then there is a resales fee that I need to just double-check in the covenant as well.
And that, would that be paid by the seller when they sell it?
Potentially. And there was some concern, I had one council member, you know, there was some concern about that because do you want, you know, somebody that's trying to get into affordable housing unit bear that cost? Or is the city gonna bear that cost? Because it's gonna be one or the other. It's either gonna be the new, you know, the new buyer, or it's gonna be the city.
For some reason, I thought the fee was like 1%, which would be a really big number.
Yeah.
Yeah, just 1%.
Okay, and can we use some of the new affordable housing revenue to to pay for this?
I'm not sure where, because I can only, since I have the presentation up. Dana and I were actually talking about that last week. Dana, could you go live for a minute and just help us a little bit with that question? I don't know, we haven't resolved the issue yet. And we'd have to look to see what the criteria is, if this would qualify, because this isn't technically like more of the low-income houses, housing. This is affordable housing at 80 and 100%. So I, I'm not sure if it would qualify. Dana, could you help us?
Yeah, we looked at it real briefly, and we both, when we looked at the affordable housing sales tax requirements, it did not seem like this would fall under that criteria.
Do we have any idea what the turnover rate is on an affordable home? Is it, or a low-end, whatever category this is?
I don't have that information, so I would have to I can ask that question of Arch, like what they're, kind of what they see as a rule of them.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you so much. This has been a lot of work, and I'm excited we're moving forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Legel.
Laura, when do you want those little edits for me? What time is that discussion?
Tomorrow morning, mid-morning, so sometime before that, please.
Okay, well, okay, I've got them sketched out, so I can try to do that first thing in the morning. The main thing that I would say for the city to understand is, has to do with mortgage default, or covenant default. And the city does have a backend responsibility here that can kick in that we need to understand. But, you know, one, two things I want to see in the, in the MOA is that we should have, there should be a provision that they will make a good faith to assure affordability, to work with other programs that exist out there. Because 10% of a $400,000 house is still $40,000, and that's gonna be pretty hard for a person at 80% of median to accumulate that amount of money if they're a first-time homebuyer. It's not so bad if they're trading down, but it's, it's not a small amount of money. And, and there are, you know, that would include the State Housing Finance Commission, the State Housing Trust Fund, which they said they're trying to figure out a way to work with. There's some other programs that are out there too. But I think there really should be something in there, because our goal is that at least the 80% of median units in particular are preserved for that long term. Otherwise, the length of the agreement is kind of superfluous, frankly. And then the other thing I would say is mortgage default counseling. HUD does have a standard around mortgage default counseling, and it includes helping people establish forbearance if there's a problem. Why is this important to default? It's important because otherwise, that property starts cycling back our way, and we don't want that to happen. And people in default can be a very expensive fee if we're paying Arch or even our own legal costs. So those are the two things that stuck out immediately, and I have some little things I'll send over to Laura.
Yeah, thank you, Dot, for providing some of that assistance, because I know that was, that, that's what you did for, I won't say a lifetime, but pretty much a lifetime. And one thing that I forgot to state, that's, that when we amend the, you know, whether it's the MOA, well, actually, it's really the covenant, is the covenant's really for 35 years. Their standard is 50, but we've already entered into that agreement with the applicant. So I just wanted to make sure that we don't think that it's gonna be 50 years. So I need to get that fixed.
Councilmember Hoag.
Oh, I was just hoping maybe you could double-check their fees for resales, because I did sell an Arch home this year and up in Redmond on Novelty Hill, and I don't remember them charging 1%. I, I don't think, because I looked at the closing statements. I'd have to pull it up again to check. But I remember there being minimal administration fees that they charge through Arch. And I think the seller paid them, not the buyer. But I will double-check my closing statement and see, but if you can just verify all those fees, that would be great.
I will definitely do that. I think, I don't know if it's because it's their, you know, like, these are new MOAs or covenants versus the old ones. They, they had some issues with their old covenants and lost some properties to affordability and had people in them renting, like, subleasing. And so I know that if you're up in Redmond Ridge, those covenants are now almost in their, like, they're halfway through almost their, their term. So my guess is they're older and aren't the same as their new ones. But if we think that that's really high, we can definitely talk to Arch and see if we can have, if we can look at something lower. Because I, I don't disagree. I think the more you charge somebody, a future owner, the harder it's gonna be for them to afford the unit. So I'll, I'll definitely include that in our comments.
Typically, the seller or they can be negotiated.
Well, I think Arch doesn't let the buyer pay any of the seller's fees, so yeah, we'd have to find out. But it's typically a seller that would pay.
Yeah. But even if it's a seller, somebody that's going from affordable to market rate, you know, that takes away some of, some of what they might need to move forward as well. So. Thank you, Councilmember Hoag.
Any further questions or feedback from Ms. Thomas on this? Right. Seeing none, we will move on to the next agenda item. And it's Agenda Bill AB 20-112A, Confirm Mayor Okerlander's Reappointment of Marcus Burley to the Duval Cultural Commission, Position Two, a three-year term ending 12/31/23. So these are typically one-touch.
Here, Mike Remington, I move that we suspend our three-touch rule.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a first and a second to suspend the three-touch rule by Mayor Protem Remington and Councilmember Hoag. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Mayor Mike Remington, I move that council approve Agenda Bill 20-112A, confirming the Mayor Okerlander's reappointment to the Duval Cultural Commission, Position Two, a three-year term ending in 12/31/23.
Thank you.
Second, Red Nikki.
We have a first by Mayor Protem Remington, a second by Councilmember Red Nikki to approve Marcus Burley's reappointment. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on for a discussion, Agenda Bill 20-113A, Pay Scale for the Building Official for Discussion. Ms. Thomas and Ms. Mason.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council members of our community. Again, I will bring up my slideshow. So good evening again. Said, I did provide quite a bit of information in the packet, but I want to go over it with council and obviously with the community. So council approved the interim building position in March of this year. This, that staff member has now passed and completed three of their three technical tests, and that was in mid to late August. The city hired Northwest Consultant to assist the city in a salary and compensation study several months ago. And we're close to getting a, a draft out to council. But we looked at specifically the building official position a little bit earlier, because this particular staff member has completed the, the items that we had asked to promote to the final position of building official. And we knew that we had to come back and look at what that salary would be. We talked a little bit about it in February and March and decided, as the council decided, along with staff, that we would look at it as part of the compensation study. And so I did take the information from that compensation study to put into this presentation this evening. So I have talked to a couple of council members already about this, where I've had some questions. The position is currently 22% to 24% off market rate with comparable cities. I think that was a little, I won't say a little bit of shock, but it kind of was, because I didn't provide any context to that. And so I want to make sure I provide the context this evening. It was likely under market rate by that much, because we haven't had an individual person in that position in, I want to say at least 15 years. It, that position has been done by the Public Works Director for the last 15 years. And so it's never really been looked at, because the Public Works Director had a different, a different salary associated to it. So it never moved along, and it was never analyzed. And so we asked our consultant to look at all of our represented and non-represented positions, and the building official was one of them. And so we worked with our consultant to look at a proposed salary range, and I've put that in the presentation as well. And we're recommending a salary range that starts at Step A at 86, 528, and goes to that top step of 104,000 and change. And we did utilize, when you see W S and C, that's with Sultan and Carnation. So what we did is we took the cities that I've shown here, which is Snohomers, Sultan, Monroe, Windville, Snoqualmie, Carnation, North Bend, and Black Diamond, and looked to see what, to see what their compensation and salary was. And then looked at what a salary, a new salary schedule could be. And then we also looked at what are those percentages in between steps and what his recommendation was to us. And so what he said is, you know, that first step is A, and then when you go from A to B, that's a 4% jump. And then everything in between there is about 3%. And that's pretty similar to what other communities are. Our salary schedule for our positions is a little bit all over the place, you know, percentage-wise. And then the total percentage of, from start to finish, so you'll see that in the report as well, when you get the full report. And so at this point, we are recommending that council adopt this salary scale as part of this next budget for 21 and 22. But we wanted to come forward and, and ask for this earlier, so that we can get it as part of this budget cycle. Because as I said, this position is, is fully certified at this point. And that was, you know, our commitment to him, was to move it forward.
Any council members have any comments or feedback? And this would be the good time to say, if you do not, aren't gonna support this, that, that now's a good time to do so. I'm not seeing any. We do have another staff person, I believe, had to, wants to make a comment.
Thanks, Mayor Chief Hart. And this is for you, Laura. I think it's important to point out, this would now be, and it could be incorrect, an exempt position, correct?
Yes. Yeah, it's, yeah, I put that, sorry, I should have added that. That's in the, in my staff briefing, but it is exempt. No, it's totally fine. No, that's, it's my fault. I should have added it. So thank you for adding. So I, so it's an exempt position, and it won't be subject to overtime.
Right.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie.
So I'm not
It's a village.
It does. So I'm not seeing any hands raised, et cetera. So I will take this as an assumption that this will move forward at our next meeting, unless we hear from people privately otherwise. And if that assumption is wrong, please speak up now. Okay, not seeing any objections there. So we'll move forward to Agenda Bill 20-114A, Elect Mayor Protem for 21 and 22. And so with that, this is council's discussion, and I'd be happy to entertain nominations, and then you all get to vote. Councilmember Napland?
I nominate that or Mayor Protem, Mike Remington. I think you did a great job.
Is there a second on council?
Second.
Okay. Any further nominations? One more chance, further nominations. Seeing none, all those in favor of electing Mayor Protem Remington to a second term as Mayor Protem, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and congratulations. And I know that I, in administration, look forward to continuing to work closely with you over the next two years. So way to go. Councilmember Napland?
I just realized, I should have asked him if he wanted to do it. We didn't. He did.
That's how we do things, right?
Too late now. Sorry, Mike.
Well, I think you know I enjoy working with each one of you. It really is an honor, and you can't do this type of position without support. So thank you. I'd be happy to do that on behalf of council. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all. And moving on to Agenda Bill 20-115A, the legislate, draft legislative agenda. I have made some modifications since I sent it to you all in the packet. Let me make sure I'm pulling up the right one here. And part of it was simply changing the order of things. Okay. And to be clear, there aren't a lot of changes from last year's legislative agenda. I think that our, our issues are pretty consistent. So one of the things that I did do is put transportation up on top and highlighted some things. So if you can all take a, a minute to read the section on transportation, that would be great. And again, not many changes. And let me know when you're ready, if you've got any feedback, or when you're ready for me to scroll.
Mayor, I have something.
Yes.
I think I mentioned this last year, or whenever it came up. I always thought it would be good to put an asterisk and a reference, insert a reference link to the study about
You're right. Yep, I'll get that added, enter.
I think it adds a nice completion, but other than that, I thought it was worth it all. I think it adds a nice completion, but other than that, I thought it was worth it all.
And just put that in for now. Councilmember Lingle.
I think this is something we talked about once before, and it would go in the third paragraph under transportation. You make a point about officers can't get to Duval, or ambulance cannot wade through stalled traffic. You might want to add a comment in there if you want, about, especially the case of, you know, a natural emergency. I mean, we would be so screwed here if we have an earthquake.
Yep.
I mean, or, you know, God forbid, the toll breaking, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, that's perfect.
Those are things that are, you know, it would just be a mess. We only have those two ways in and out. Get to us helicopters.
Yeah, I can tell you with my years at Snohomish County, when I was doing backup PIO work, they were serious about not wanting the full-time PIO and me on the Highway Two trussel at the same time. You know, we're in an area where bridges are essential, and you don't realize it until you don't have access. So that's a good add. Any others on that section? Okay, so moving on, you know, I thought it would be good and consistent to continue to keep the five twenty-two and north four or five improvements in place. That goes along with the transportation issues that we see as a city. So if there's any changes or whatever in that, please let me know. And actually, that's another good place. I'll put another asterisk, Amy, to reiterate that study. Okay, is that good with everybody? Okay, and then this, we touched on this obviously a little bit in the growth targets conversation, and it's, you know, it is one that's starting to grow amongst cities, so this is a good thing. So, you know, we don't have a direct proposal at this time, but I think it's important to encourage the discussion and start pushing the envelope with this issue, especially in a vision and a comprehensive plan update cycle. I'm seeing heads nod. Okay, so we'll move on to broadband. And this is definitely, is changed from last year to specifically, actually, you know what? This one is not changed from last year. But we probably should include something about the additional work from home and effective education on the pandemic. But I wanted to see if there's, you know, anything else you guys think needs to be included in that paragraph.
I have a question about that paragraph.
Yes.
I mean, isn't this issue interrelated with, also with GMA? I mean, if they want, you know, if they want, I mean, I just did a quick calculation. You know, six hundred new jobs in Duval. You know, the most likely that those jobs are going to be in Duval's if there's internet access. Is there a link there that we?
Um.
I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud after, I guess my mind is spinning after Laura's presentation.
Yeah, I think in general, I think there, overall, there is a nexus, but the GMA doesn't, you know, the state doesn't have any real full control over broadband at this point. So I don't know, and to be clear, people, and I know plenty of people that live in Seattle that have Comcast that do not have reliable internet service in downtown. So I don't know that we could make that argument so much that it's a rural issue versus, you know, a city issue and et cetera. Because I really, as I've talked to people around the state, the issue impacts everybody. The people doing best with broadband are those counties and jurisdictions that got RFPs and put the fiber in the ground themselves. We can if folks want to, but I don't think that, I don't feel like the nexus is quite there at this time. But if other folks want to, I'm fine with that as well. I just want to, also want to try and make sure we stay focused as well.
I guess you've got employment opportunities in there, so I think that covers it.
Okay. Anyone else on that bullet? Okay, so then we move on to behavioral health funding and support, and this was a new one for us last year. And I added some, just a little bit of language about the global pandemic. And after, after our meeting with Patty Hayes this morning, I put this a little lower on the priority list, but I almost feel like it needs to be above broadband. But that's, you know, up to you guys on how you want to prioritize. But you're just going to a recent doctor's appointment. It's now standard protocol that every person that comes in, with certain health organizations are being screened, are being screened for depression and anxiety. And we're seeing, obviously, a spike in challenges with children and teens and adults in particular. So I'm not sure if folks have suggestions for how to beef this up or change it to be a little bit more meaningful. Our Senator Monica Dingrad definitely works on these issues extensively, so I know she's in our court. But I think one of the biggest concerns is that we're heading towards disaster if we can't get relief from the pandemic, and we don't get additional funding for, in particular, mental health and behavioral health. And not seeing any hands. And that's okay. So we'll move on to land use regulation and changes. And this is a pretty broad statement because we don't know, we don't really know what's going to be coming forth, but it's something that we always want to make sure we're discussing. And this was language that we had in the twenty-twenty agenda. The city recommends any land use changes be thoughtfully considered with regard to all jurisdictions impacted and the infrastructure required to support those changes. So it ties into transportation, but it's a lot more vague. We just, we have no idea what the proposals coming forward are going to be. And if, if folks want to beef that up or change it, that would work as well. Okay, not seeing any at this point, so we'll go ahead.
I raised my hand.
I didn't see a.
Director Thomas had any, any way we could beef this up? I think my biggest concern is it seems like some of the ideas they come up with are a one-size-fits-all, and it doesn't really translate to community. And so I don't know, I'm just curious if Director Thomas had any things that might be coming or ways we could beef this up.
I will, hopefully everybody can hear me, I will take a look at it, and then I'll work with the mayor. I would say we could always put a little bit more, you know, into it, especially given that we're going into the twenty-twenty-four comp plan cycle. And, you know, we're looking at updating our transportation element and plan again, and then some other pretty beefy items that we'll be looking at. And I think that whenever a, whenever the state has a mandate that it should somehow be funded, you know, somewhat by the state to help us along. But let me, let me, I'll stop. I don't want to like take up too much time, but let me look at it, and I'll work with the mayor tomorrow or after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I don't know if this is the appropriate place, but one of the concerns I had personally was there was some legislation being considered that would require any annexations to be a minimum of R six.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I hate to put a negative in there, but we, you know, I'd certainly oppose any legislation that would take away our ability as a city to determine what our zoning is.
That's a really great one to bring up. That was up in the last two sessions, so the bill is dead unless it's reintroduced. I have not heard any rumblings that it's going to be. We could add that language, but I also, you know, this language is also loose enough where we know that that's a city priority, and if we see something on the legislative agenda, we can jump and write a letter in opposition to it as well. But we could certainly add, maybe we add language that's specific to zoning changes and annexations or something like that.
So Mayor, I have seen a first version of some changes to GMA. And one of those is not even just in annexation areas, but at least so far across the board, minimum density of six units per acre.
So, yeah, we should probably address that. Council, do you have thoughts on that? I think Mayor Protem brought up a really good point. Not seeing any. So I guess. Oh.
Number Lingle.
Councilmember Lingle, and then Councilmember Napland.
Yeah, I just want to share what I saw in Seattle, which was, it was sort of a density creep in single-family neighborhoods on a policy level, where it started out with, you know, detached units. I mean, you know, ADA, ADUs, attached dwelling units, then it was detached dwelling units. And now, now what it basically shakes out is a single-family lot is essentially a triplex lot. And so it doesn't take long for these incremental little things to totally mess up your, I mean, change your zoning completely. And, you know, I'm more sympathetic to density, I realize, than most. But when you start losing control of a four thousand square foot lot, you've lost it all. And that's exactly what's happened in Seattle. And it is, it has made neighborhoods, it has pushed families out in an amazing way in a short period of time, and it's made living in those neighborhoods just horrible. So I think that really is a good example of what Mayor Protem is talking about.
Yeah, well, how about, Laura, do I work on some language and bring it back for the next council meeting? Councilmember Napland, did you have something to add?
I didn't. I just didn't think you saw.
I didn't, so thank you. The last item that we have on this one right now is government facilities, planning, and design funding. Last year, we did call it capital facilities. Ms. Thomas let it, you know, reminded us, we should be saying government facilities because it's the buildings in which we work and the community utilizes. So this is the same language as last year, and the point is just to keep it on their radar, that when we're ready, we'll be coming to them and asking for money. And it gives us an opportunity to discuss with legislators what our facility status is and what our future needs will be. We don't have to have it on here, but sometimes it's good to have just that ongoing issue to keep it at their forefront so that when we are ready to make a big capital request, we can, and already have some kind of a foot in the door of knowledge. Okay, does anybody have any feedback on that? Okay, I guess that's what happens when you don't have a whole lot of changes from year to year. So if I, you know, in the interest of time, if anybody has anything else they want to add or see things that need to be changed, if you can get back to me by Friday this week, that would be great. If it's okay with council, since we already do have a special meeting on the agenda for next week, I would like to be able to bring this forward so that we can get it approved and emailed out to our legislators. I think I've shared with council last week that the legislators from the fifth district are trying to plan a meeting with us to discuss the legislative stuff. So if we can get it done before the fifteenth, that'll give us enough time to meet within their time window, unless anybody objects. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, seeing some head nods. Okay, great. Thank you, guys. And I will stop sharing my screen now and go back to the agenda. All right, so moving on to Agenda Bill twenty dash one sixteen A, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, on-call contract amendments for discussion and/or decision.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, citizens. Steve Monchuski. So the packet provided is an update to the list of on-call contract support entities we have citywide. And we chose to work on a short-term extension just to get us through not only the budget work here, but the beginning of the year, as we know, we are going through a look into contract administration for the code or per a policy manual or whatnot. So we just thought this is the simplest way to go. And these are all routine support service entities that we use to get through general government work, engineering, planning, utilities and such. So I'm not sure if there are any questions. Double-checking the Agenda Bill here. I think this is a first touch. And it would be great to have these adopted and extended prior to the end of the year. Any sort of questions, comments?
Councilmember Lingle.
I'm actually, I mean, I know we had talked about doing this, but I actually have to say that I'm very surprised at the amount of the amendments that are being sought for six months worth of work. And my concern is that depending on how those, those extensions would work, I mean, I have to, I want to talk to the director about this, is that it effectively will, I don't want to use the word eliminate, but it is, it would have a strong influence that would make it very difficult for us to show that we are meeting the statute's requirement for equitable distribution of opportunity because we've worked with these firms for so long. And, you know, if, if, if the extensions take these, these projects into a place where there's no further opportunities for RFPs, then that's exactly what we've done. And I realize this is a rollover from past times, so it really, I, you know, I'm really concerned about that because these are contracts that have gone on a very long time, you know, in terms of dollar volume. And by these extensions, you're not going to switch consultants in the middle of a project because of liability purposes. So I really need to understand how these on-call relationships are going to work because I don't want them to preclude other people having opportunities in the city. And that's what I'm really worried about. Because again, you're not going to shift a consultant that is in the middle of design work. And these are very, very big on-call relationships, not small ones.
So these are exactly that. They are on-call. These contracts themselves, there may be others on this list who have a specific contract, but the on-call element of their work is just that. They're not tied to a project. So I want to be clear on that. They're not tied to a specific project. They're tied to a specific support. When I have a developer coming in and we have to provide flow, flow regime and dynamics of our water model, Murray Smith provides that at our request. So there are, yes, some long-term relationships here, but these are not specific to the, you know, on the list here, I put on screen, blue line, this isn't their contract for two seventy-fifth. This is their contract for planning support services. So we did that with the extension that we would come forward with the new policy, however it shakes out, whatever the on-call rules say to that is what we would engage in, in that next go-round. Does that make sense? So there isn't a distinct tie to anybody on the list, per se. There would be a process at the end of this road. We just figured six months is a reasonable amount of time. Development is busy, so we may need development support, and some of those costs are reasonable to potentially be expended as they are. The majority of the work from Transpo, Murray Smith, PACE, Geo Engineers, Parametrics, ESA, Auto Rosinar West Coast, those are development-related activities. DA Hogan is our specialty for parks, and blue line, of course, for planning. So the intent is to not carry anybody through, but follow a new process when the new process is adopted as it's been discussed. That's the intent.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just surprised. I mean, to have these be six months assumes that all that money potentially is being spent in six months, right, in terms of the amendments? And, and so I, I realize that different ones have different types of, there are different types of relationships. But technically speaking, there is no such thing as on-call when you look at the way public works is supposed to work. And so we need to figure that out. And I'm not opposed to on-call contracts. You know that. I've said that a number of times. But I really think. But I really think we need to think through procurement, how it's going to work so that we preserve that equal opportunity for new firms. So I have questions, and I just thought I'd say that I was really surprised about the amounts of money that were being requested for the extensions. Some are obviously much smaller than others, but yeah. So that's just my comment.
So Dorothy, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Lengel. All, one that I've struggled with, you know, it's only for, you know, I shouldn't say it's only for six months, but I had to look at, like, for example, Blue Line Consulting. We, I had them review one component of a project last month. And it was really the first time where I really used them from start to finish on one item. And in one month, the bill was $10,000. And I thought, oh, my gosh, is this going to be consistent? So I had to go through and look at our projects. We've given them two other projects to kickstart us while we're trying to finish up some other projects in planning that are current development because what we're trying to do is stay timely within our statutory requirements. And so I think, quite honestly, I'm not even sure that, at least for Blue Line, that that's going to be enough to get us through the six months. I could go through that in the first three or four months and have to come back to council because we're just in that type of cycle right now. We've had several new projects come in, and then we're trying to finish out a couple of old. There is a great opportunity for planning, though, to look at, you know, at new consultants for peer review, including ESA, you know, our long-term relationship with, you know, with that firm. You know, I'm not saying it's run its course by any means, but they have a lot of new staff turnover, so that's always a great opportunity, you know, to really go back out and look at three or four or five terms of firms. So I think there is some opportunity, at least, you know, for planning in peer review for environmental, but also for project review as well. But I do want to say that I'm not even sure that at least that particular contract is going to be enough to get us through the first six months.
Any other council members have any questions or concerns?
Just a comment from Mike Remington?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Potem.
Most of those look like they're companies many cities use. They're pretty standard. I realize that, for the most part, we're using them because we have a lot of work in our development activities, and we don't have the capacity to handle all those in a timely manner. You know, they seem like large amounts, but, you know, we're getting a lot of money in for these projects permitting and so on. So it seems like a reasonable thing to move forward. Last comment is that many times cities have the ability to re-up contracts automatically to have extensions. But usually, there's a limit to that where you get two, maybe three, but after three, you're required to go back out. And, you know, and I don't know what ours is, but I suggest that we do take a look at something like that. So moving forward, we have some limits, and we always set ourselves up for success to go out and see what else is out there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. And Mr. Lenishewski, can you please remind me on when we need a decision on this? Is this the 7th or the 15th?
Prior to the end of the year. So these contracts typically expire December 31. We have pushed them forward with the adjusted amount and end time at the end of 2021.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Agenda Bill 20-117A, Resolution for Bond Proceeds for Discussion and/or Decision.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Dana Mason, Finance Director. Let me see if I can grab my other screen here. All right, so I'll just start with a little history. So the bond ordinance, 12/12 passed in February of 2017 to help finance Big Rock Ballpark and Main Street improvements. Per the bond ordinance, unused proceeds may be used on other capital projects being necessary by city council. So 790,000 of the proceeds for the Main Streets Improvement projects will be available for other projects and need to be reallocated. The city sought bond council to determine if the projects in the resolution were an allowable use of, the attached resolution were allowable use of bond proceeds. And it were, so we'll just go ahead and look at the bond proceeds or the suggested projects for use of the bond proceeds. And this has been changed a little bit since the last meeting at recommendation of council. So there's a property acquisition that would occur in this year possibly. And then some smaller capital facilities projects that would occur in 2021. The resolution needs to be passed before the bond proceeds can be used. So it would need to be passed, I would say, within, actually, Director Lenish, Steve? It's so hard for me to say his name. Steve, would you want to step in and talk about the property purchase? Is this a good time or?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Did you want to, did you need to say something about the property purchase? Is this a good time for it, or is that for another?
I'm not, yeah, I don't, it doesn't matter whether we're funds or the other allocated funds that are eligible. Talking about actually the other eligible funds, but.
Okay, all right. Were there any questions from council? I'll stop sharing my screen.
Councilmember Napland?
Does this give us flexibility if, for some reason, we still have money left over? I doubt it would ever happen, but if we did, do we have the option to then amend the list? If for some.
Yeah, I believe we would have to do another resolution.
Okay, but there's nothing to stop us. This isn't like.
No.
Yeah, so we'd have the same flexibility as we did originally to just.
Right, we would just have to update the resolution.
And are we specifying exactly how are we paying it, or are we leaving that flexible?
We do not have to put that in the resolution. So I have made some budget amendments to use some different funds to help pay for the Main Street debt, the portion that's used for these projects.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Councilmember Lengel, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted you to refresh my memory. And I don't know that this will apply to this, you know, this, it's called a declaration. But what I recall is you saying that in the past, when we did Main Street, that staff time was, could be billable to that. Is that, yes, I am remembering that correctly.
Yes, so the bond council did say that staff time spent on Main Street could be billable if the city did want to do that.
Oh, no, go ahead.
We would have to make sure that, I'm not 100% sure that it was tracked, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I can't, I've got a technology problem, so I can't pull up your resolution. I just want to make sure that there's nothing, I just want to make sure there's nothing that would prohibit that in any of the, either this declaration or a future declaration. I know it's eligible by bond council, but I just don't want to see that precluded.
Okay, let me see if I can pull up the resolution real quickly for you.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't get it.
I'm almost there. Okay, let me share. So your question was?
Yeah, the declaration has, you know, if it's not in the declaration, you can't do it. So whether you actually use that authority or not is up to us. But if it's not in the declaration, it can't be, it can't happen. And this would include, I mean, this might include, I'm not totally sure, but it would also presume that even though when Main Street was done before staff time was charged to it, when we do the completion of Main Street, we can't charge to it.
I don't know, well, I don't know that that's 100% true. I think this is just the, if there's, so there is some bond proceeds that are still allocated to Main Street to finish off the project in 2021. So it's possible staff time could be charged to that portion. And there is an asterisk that says that the amounts are not exact. So, I mean, if one of these projects, if we did need to use some money, additional funding for Main Street, I think we could certainly take off one of these projects. One of the smaller ones.
I think that, it sounds like it'll be okay. It's just that I know that the subsequent declaration has to be specific.
Anyone else? So this is technically the the first touch on the bond proceeds. I think everyone was in relative agreement about this direction last week. And so wondering, since it's, there shouldn't be too much more discussion, if you're okay with putting it on the special meeting for the 7th for approval and suspend the rolls for a second touch? And the reason why I'm trying to get these easy things on the agenda for the 7th is because the 15th will be packed as well. And so if we can balance out, if our discussion on the 7th is just budget discussion, and we've got a few items of business that can be done quickly, it'll save time at the next meeting. So is there objection to going on the 7th? Councilmember Napland?
Is this something we could put on the consent agenda? I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but I'll throw that out there, make it go quicker.
Okay. We'll do that.
Just to, the meeting will be on the 8th, not the 7th.
I'm sorry. Getting my dates.
A Monday meeting next week? Okay, so I just want to make sure we're all clear. It's on the 8th, not the 7th.
Okay, we can do that. All right, so we will go ahead and keep moving along. Next up is Agenda Bill 20-118A, Resolution Regarding Big Rock Ball Field's Fee Schedule for Discussion. Mr. Lenishewski.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. I received zero questions or calls on this. I know it's a busy time of year, but trying to find the right button here. So I provided in the packet, one, a recommendation, but two, the comparative review of other agencies' rental rates in our area. And the areas I chose were specific to the competitive rentability of fields in our area. So teams that come here usually and typically use these other fields that were listed as comparisons. Chose not to go too far east, well, anywhere west of Redmond, nowhere east of us. The 203-202 corridor, and we are as far north as I chose. So sports fields that were turf-related, you know, Snoqualmie, Woodinville, Riverview School District, the stadium. The King County is Redmond Ridge North, which is less than four miles from here. Fall City, which is Snow Falls School District at Chief Cana Middle School. And then City of Redmond is Perrigo Park, which is not quite that far of a jump. So those are the ones I chose to use. They also had competing interests on some of their natural grass turfs. So I inquired into all of the rentability, developed an average, and showed you those relative to city's Duval rates. In that comparison search and discussion with entities, Redmond, Snoqualmie, Woodinville, I actually took the opportunity to ask if they were going to perhaps hold rates stable because of the current pandemic. So they said, yes, they are not going to incur rate increase in 2021. Other entities had, some were not sure, some did not respond, so. I know Little League made comment in the beginning of the meeting. I assume he probably meant to do it at the part of the meeting we have after this topic for public hearing. But I know Greg Napland with Little League, when he worked on some comparative effort, he submitted with Bellevue, Monroe, Redmond, Kirkland, King County, and Duval. So I really don't think Bellevue is any comparison. They have a $48.6 million biennial budget for parks. I don't think it compares. I think if they wanted to charge zero, they probably could. So I didn't think it was relevant. Monroe, I don't know that many of the agencies we use go that way, so I did not use Monroe. Kirkland, again, have a very robust budget, not that Redmond doesn't, but Redmond's so close and Kirkland is so far. So I couldn't consider using that. It was interesting to see the numbers, but nonetheless. So that's the comparison. The approach after discussing this with the mayor was we did propose a no-fee increase for 2021 and then a $1 per hour per element increase for 2022. I know that's maybe not fun, but, you know, a small staff managing pennies on the dollar is fairly inefficient and leads to errors, which we don't need math errors on the auditor's behalf on our rent here. So I tried to keep it simple. Yes, that makes the increase different percentage-wise per element, but I thought that was the way to go. Another change that we recommended was a field prep rate that pertains to what Greg Napland mentioned as field one, which is technically by our definition, field three, which is a natural grass baseball field. So our fields are numbered from east to west. One is the big soccer field, two is the baseball field in the middle, and three is the grass, natural grass turf on the western portion of the property, field three. So the intent there is Little League has been doing the work. We do the work, they do the work, they do the work more consistently as they would like. And they have a container near third base line. They have a little drag mat. They have a little device, I can't remember if it's a lawnmower or a quad, and they drag the field and tend to the infield. It has merit. I didn't want to get into counting hours and going back and forth on that kind of audit element, but knowing that they would do it, that we could check in on it, and we would give a lower rate because they have the equipment available. So that's kind of one of the new items shown here on this field prep rate. And that rate was proposed at $20 an hour. I'm trying to wipe it on here. Oh, there it is. Sorry. Standard rate's 27 for the natural grass and then 43 for the turf.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Lenishewski? Okay, not seeing any. We'll have a second touch on this at the next meeting. So in the meantime, if anything comes up, please contact me and Mr. Lenishewski. So moving on to Agenda Bill 20-118A, Resolution for Big Rock Ball Field's Fee Schedule for COVID-19 for Discussion Only. Mr. Lenishewski?
Hello again, Council, Mayor, Citizen, Staff. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. We've had a few discussions relative to ball field and healthy access to recreation areas. So with council in general. So we put this resolution in the packet, which I felt there was support for some element of reduction to encourage, you know, healthy, active lifestyles during the pandemic. So bottom line is a 50% reduction in the rental of the ball field rates through the pandemic. We proposed looking at it in six-month intervals, meaning we won't go month-to-month, but either A, when the pandemic ends, or B, we look at the end of June, hey, are we still in a pandemic? Are people still reluctant to get out? Are we waiting for the vaccine? You know, any one of a number of things. Great, then we go through the, you know, the next six months. So that was the intent, to bring something forward with, you know, little discussion, but knowing there was some interest in some sort of reduction forward with the sunset, of course, when we are able to get back to normal and operate as a regular society. And then with the. And then with the comparisons too, going back half step, I did provide all the links to all the other agencies for those who like to dig and dive and and have fun. Their their relative level of fun, not not many. There you go.
Great. Councilmember Napland?
I just want to say, I think this is a great idea, giving the discount. I I know a lot of the leagues try to supplement the user fees with, you know, getting donations from local businesses, and that would be really hard to do right now to go out and try to get some fundraising done when the businesses are really struggling. So I think this is a really great move. The only thing I I would wonder is, you know, leagues kind of have to set their fees based on, you know, how much their expenses are. And so if this could just end abruptly, if the pandemic abruptly ended and they projected that they were going to have to pay a reduced rate and suddenly boom, it's higher, that could be, you know, that could be a little bit tricky. So I I don't know how to address that. I don't know. I think Little League is probably going to be setting their fees soon. But soccer might be kind of in on the cusp of trying to sort out how, what to expect. So that would be my only feedback.
Yeah, we could look at any number of ways.
Yeah, I Steve, what we might want to do is review every six months. But if there's a contract in place for a league that it continues through the season.
So we don't do contracts, right? It's just rent
Right.
schedule. So so you're thinking if somebody is booked time that they I guess the fee is applicable at the time of booking.
Yes, yes.
So
But
select and premier clubs, you know, out the door, but they have all, you know, scheduled what they scheduled, the people pay what they pay. I do think the little leagues and rec soccer, they may have a bigger issue with trying to get a better rate. So yeah, I don't, I'm not sure the best way to look at that is either. So if anybody has any other thoughts.
We can certainly look it over at the next week too. Councilmember Napland?
Have we considered having this for the nonprofit, the, well, I think a lot of the, you know, more premier select groups also are technically nonprofits, but more recreational, anyone can play type leagues. Is that something that's even possible to to keep it to the? I don't know if that would be fair. I'm just, you know, contemplating. We do have tiers now, I think, in you know, in the prioritization of scheduling. And so it could just be that one tier that's that's just an idea.
Yeah, I'd hate to, again, I I mentioned that the premier groups are willing to pay the regular rate, but I I do know and I've been made aware, you know, they are scheduling kind of just group sessions. Not for one specific team, but for, you know, their club to go just go play. And so that's, I think, more in tune with kind of this activity, not necessarily games and whatnot. But yeah. I don't know. I I don't know that's going to go much past the end of June relative to scheduling anyway. So I don't know. We can always address it at that time too, because that gets the spring season for soccer over for the select and premier groups that gets all of Little League through. Except for, I think, you know, the Little League World Series stuff, which I think begins end of June into July. So. But it's not an easy one here. It's off the cuff and a little out of the ordinary.
Any other council feedback or comments on this one? Okay, we'll we'll try and figure out a way to massage that a little bit over the next week then and move forward. So moving on, our next agenda item is a public hearing for the resolution for the Big Rock Ball Field's fee schedule. And with that, I will open the public hearing and Mr. Lenishewski, you may take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. So before you and the community is the Big Rock Ball Field proposed fee schedule for 2021 slash 2022. Item was previously discussed. We are recommending holding fees at today's rates for 2021 with a $1 incremental increase per element on the fee table for 2022 timeline. Compared to rates were were given for local jurisdictions of like similar activity level and similar fields. And the information has been provided in the packet.
All right. So at the end of your presentation. So I I will close the public hearing. And with that, if there's anyone on the line that would like to provide public comment, now would be the time. So raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
And actually, Mayor, you can't close the public hearing until after they have the
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You're right. It's getting late.
Both have been given the ability to speak so they can unmute now.
Okay.
And Mayor, I know, you know, Greg Naplin with Little League gave his spiel in the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if we need to email him to confirm he wanted that for this. It was given in the beginning. I'm sure it's transferable now.
I would just suggest including it in public comments. It was pretty clear or public hearing comments because it was pretty clear of why he was here. Okay, so I'm not seeing anyone that would like to speak. So now I will officially close the public hearing. And we'll move on to our next item of business, unfinished business, Agenda Bill 20 AB 20-101B Resolution for the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Docket for Discussion and Decision. And this is the second touch. So if folks are ready to move forward, then we will just need to do what we've done with everything else and suspend the rules. And with that Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Troy.
I was gonna say briefly, the funding commission didn't make a recommendation on their at their November 23 funding commission meeting to include all 10 items on the final 2021 docket.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions or feedback? Councilmember Napland?
I didn't quite hear you, Troy. Was it they did or they did not? They did. Okay.
All right. Do folks want to move this forward this evening or move it to a different agenda? Everyone's, oh, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
If the council agrees, I think we could move that to our consent agenda.
Okay, does that work for everyone? Perfect. We'll do that. So it'll go under the consent agenda. Moving on to Agenda Bill 20-94C Toll Brothers Affordable Housing for Discussion, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council Laura Thomas. For the record, this is kind of just an extension of the discussion we had earlier, but they are two separate actions. I will bring forward the covenant at the next meeting for approval. We're getting down to the wire on these units, excuse me, on these units being ready for sale. We're getting ready to do occupancy checks on some of these units over the next couple of weeks. And so Toll Brothers would obviously like to would like to sell them. And it does take a while for them to go through that process as well. So we'll get that, I guess, what we'll call hopefully that final last covenant and get that approved so that Toll Brothers can move forward. The agreement for the memorandum of agreement with Toll can lag that a little bit. Because they'll they'll help us do all of the checks and balances. So I think we have a little bit of time for that if we needed one more meeting after that for the MOA. But it is going to be important that we get the covenant for the restriction of sale and resale hammered hammered out here before then before the end of the year.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Thomas? Okay, not seeing any. So we'll move, go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. Agenda Bill 20-107B Comprehensive Garbage Recyclables and Compostables Collection Services Contract for Discussion and or Decision. And this is the second touch, formal touch of this item.
So just to jump in, Jody, myself and and even Steve, we're prepared to to have a conversation. We haven't received any follow up questions since our last meeting, correct, Jody?
That is correct. I have not received any. I did, excuse me, I did receive one email from Councilmember Lengel saying she had no comments. So
Okay, okay.
But we do have one specific decision point that we need at least have nods on. So I want to make sure that that happens. Do you want me to talk about it or do you want to talk about it?
Jody, go ahead.
Sorry. We need to get councils confirmation on the administration fee as presented. It is presented at 9%, which essentially keeps us even with with where we're at right now revenue wise. And we just need councils okay that they want to stick with 9% or if there if council wants, you know, ops to increase or decrease that it will affect revenues for 2022, which of course Dana might pull her hair out if we mess with the budget much or at this point. So so I just need councils head nod on that. And then the other thing that we that will affect rates and the final contract would be those options that were presented to council in the last meeting and in this packet. Any alternates to the contracts that are not currently included. The only one that is currently included is alternate two, which was the bulky waste day, like one big event, but we we put it in so that we can opt to do that. And it would be an additional charge, which we would have to give the contractor. I can't remember the exact number, but it's at least six months notice. So that would be something to discuss, you know, at a later date anyway. And we can Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, if we decide to do the bulky collection day, do they build that into the rate for the next year if you schedule it? And so then the rate would be higher for that year. Okay, so it doesn't net out of our admin fee or something like that.
Right. As far as far as I can recall reviewing the contract, it would increase the fees. I I do know that Marcy from Waste Management is on the line if we had specific questions, but that is my understanding is that and that's why they need the notice. I believe the contract requests notice for that, like in September or something of the year prior to when you would want to hold the event so that they can adjust the rates accordingly.
Okay, and then, yeah, I would not want to go higher than 9% on that admin fee. It already seems really high. And do they, don't we pay utility taxes on top?
There is a utility tax for garbage, yes.
Yeah, that's a lot of the cost of garbage is taxes or fees coming to the city. Yeah, I'm not a super big fan of that, but at this point, if we took it out, we'd have to fill in the gap in the budget. So I would not be in favor of making it go up. That is for sure.
Great. So let's finish council addressing on the first question. Are there any objections to the 9% admin fee being consistent with what we've had over the years? So not seeing any. So I'm assuming that's a go. And then the bulky waste day. Does anybody have any strong opinions about that? So include it?
It's included as an option.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So
It would not affect the rates out the door.
Right.
Okay.
So is everyone in agreement with that? Okay, seeing that. Oh, Mayor Protem?
Brief question. I thought included that once a year citizens could put out one bulky item, a refrigerator or something else, and it and there was no additional cost to that.
Yeah, there is. There is a bulky pickup for so each resident will once a year be able. It's an on call bulky pickup. I don't think refrigerators are included because of the chemicals that have to be removed, but something like a couch, extra garbage, you know, spring cleaning kind of thing. So that is that is included.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So with that, do folks want to move forward with this tonight or move it forward to the
We can't yet.
Go ahead.
We can't approve it as it stands right now. Jeff needs to work with Marcy to finalize all of the documents.
Okay.
All of the rate fees, everything else. So we intend to bring it back on the 15th for action if council is available.
Great. Thank you for that. All right. It looks like we probably have consensus, so it should sail through. Next up is Agenda Bill 20-100C Ordinance for the 21-22 Biennial Budget. Being as we are having another meeting on this next Tuesday, it's council's call whether you want to further discussion now or wait until Tuesday. We are approaching 9:30. So before we even get to that, I'll ask for a motion to extend the meeting past 9:30.
Mike Cremington, I move we extender meeting past 9:30.
Oh, sec. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we will go ahead and it's up to council of whether you want to discuss more of the budget this evening or wait until Tuesday. I'm not seeing any. Oh, Councilmember Hoag.
I I feel like we've had some good discussion tonight already about budget, so I think it could wait, but
I mean, the the only the only other thing would be, and council's been declared, they're not ready to vote. So I think it does make sense to just move it to next Tuesday. So if there are no objections, we will move on to Agenda Bill 20-108B, an ordinance for the 2019-2020 Budget Adjustments for Discussion. Ms. Mason?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Let me just pull up my slideshow here. So what I have tonight is just the changes since the last meeting. So and can everyone still see that? So changes to fund balances the last meeting. And so it add it. So the changes in the fund balance add 3.84 million.
Dana, your screen is over your screen.
Oh, my God.
Sorry.
How's that?
No better.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. There you go.
Can what can you see you when I put you here? Can you just see the screen? Okay.
Changes to fund balance 3.84 million slide.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. So the proposed changes to the ending fund balance add 3.84 million to the ending fund balance or the estimated beginning fund balance of the 21-22 budget by increasing expected revenues by 3.4 million and decreasing expenditures by 454 million. And so here's just the changes to the revenue and the different amendments that we've had over the biennium. And then basically there were just two changes to expenditures. There is a Main Street Improvement Fund Transfer out a bond proceeds to the Park CIP Fund. And then there is a $25,000 General Fund Transfer out to Big Rock Ballpark Field for operating reserves of two months. And then changes to revenues after the at the November 17th meeting, revenues were increased by 2.8 million. That has been changed to an increase of about eight of 3.4 million or approximately $594,000. And it's basically the same thing with one difference. And so there's a transfer in to the Park CIP fund for a bond proceeds for the Main Street Improvement Fund, and then the transfer into Big Rock Bar Ballpark fund from the General Fund to create the operating reserve. And then there is a reduction in general fund grant revenues, which we'll be receiving in the next biennium. So the big picture is and the net, basically the net effect of the changes since the net, basically the net effect of the changes since last meeting is just a reduction in fund balance of approximately $11,240 for the ground. So it just kind of nets out. And that is all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
Seeing any questions? This is a pretty straightforward end of year adjustment. So unless council, you know, if you've got anything to come forward with in the next week, please do. Otherwise, we'll assume we're ready to go on this. All right. So with that, we will be moving to executive session. The purpose is to evaluate public or performance of a public employee. We have it scheduled for 10 minutes. If we need more than 10 minutes, we will let the clerk know, but we do not intend to take action after the executive session. So with that, council and Ms. Thomas and Mr. Kenny will come to executive session.
So Jody, do you know, can you hear me? Who, what, what's this discussion about? You have, oh, you're muted. Oh, because you're recording. Okay. Are you recording me?
For the record, this is Jody Wykoff, City Clerk. The executive session is being extended by five minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wykoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended by two minutes.
Some member on the line that objects, we are adjourned and there you have it. Thank you all for joining us tonight.
Jody? Can you hear me really quick? Did we need for council?